Are you ready?
There's a lot of people ready.
Good evening, welcome to the West Covina City Council meeting. Today is September 19, 2023, and it is 7:06. I am the mayor of West Covina, and my name is Rosario Diaz, and welcome. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mason Akubo from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, and Councilman Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Heavenly Father, guardian and keeper of your people, watch over the members of our city council and protect them, grant them wisdom and joy in their service. Help us all not to look forward in fear, but rather to look forward with hope, help us to see opportunity and change. As changes arise, lead us safely through all trials and tribulations, and when we cannot stand it, carry it in your arms. Show us how to serve in effective ways that we might make the world a better place. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen. Everyone, please put your right hand to your heart and face the flag and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, Rove Call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai.
Present.
Mayor Diaz.
Here. City Attorney, anything to report out of our closed session?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to have the presentation from the Water Quality Authority. If I can have Randy Shulerman to the front.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council, or Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. I am Valerie Munoz, your representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. I represent cities with non-pumping rights. Also, your neighboring city council member from the city of West Covina, um, West Covina. My apologies.
Are you moving?
It's been a long day. I also, right, oh, please, no, no, no. I also want to introduce, we have our Mayor of Azusa with us, Robert Gonzalez. He's also a board member representing with cities with pumping rights, and so he's also my sidekick. We kind of just tag along when we do presentations. First of all, I want to thank you. I know you've seen me many times, but it's great to have a formal presentation, and I'm bringing the man of the hour, Mr. Randy Shulerman, who's the pro. He knows all the information, so if you have the hard questions, please ask him. Don't ask me when I come next time. So just want to say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Valerie. Good evening, city council members, glad to be here this evening, and I'm hopefully going to answer some of your questions, and if you feel like questions come to your mind, feel free to ask. I'll spend a few minutes in this brief presentation about the Water Quality Authority. Next slide. Here we have a map of the basin, the San Gabriel Groundwater Basin. So in the black line, for those who aren't familiar with it, the groundwater basin is outlined in black. Some of the colors that you see are the plumes of groundwater contamination that we have in our basin. That's legacy contamination. It's been there for a long time. The short of it is our agency, the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, was created to deal with that contamination that's in the groundwater basin. Separate from that, the groundwater, the groundwater that is pulled out of the ground is treated and is perfectly safe to drink. But we are dealing with how to get rid of this from our ground so we can replenish, restore the groundwater basin. Let me do a little bit of history with you on the groundwater basin. So next slide. The contamination was first discovered in 1979. It's legacy, meaning the contamination came from a lot of industries that happened in the 40s and 50s, or some aerospace going on in the valley. It also comes from machine shops that might use degreasers, and some of those disposal practices were not that favorable, and so they ended up on the ground and got into the groundwater, some of those degreasers, and that's how some of the contamination got into the ground. The Environmental Protection Agency has oversight, is a federal agency under the, at that time was a brand-new, relatively new superfund program. So they came into our basin to do their job, and that was to take care of this groundwater contamination. The state also gets involved, right, because the state's going to look at this too. So there are state water regulators coming into the San Gabriel Valley and looking at this, along with the federal regulators. Then we have our local water districts and cities also concerned, cities such as yourselves, about what's going to happen with the groundwater contamination. But after all that, the parties got together and decided that there wasn't one entity that could really address the groundwater contamination at that time. They didn't have the right authorities and couldn't handle the issues, and so there was an agreement to create, ultimately was the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, to handle it. Next slide. We'll show that in 1992, the Water Quality Authority Act created a five-member board, where local agency responsible for the groundwater cleanup, non-regulatory, that's important, we plan and finance treatment projects, and we have what's called the Groundwater Quality Management Remediation Plan. That plan is a very detailed plan of all the cleanup programs going on in the valley. Right now, there's 32 treatment plants operating in the San Gabriel Valley. A lot of that is detailed in this groundwater plan. It's on our website, if you all care to go take a look at it, it gives you lots of information there. We also, as I said, we coordinate not only with the local, with the state, and then coordinate with the federal agencies as well. Now, when they created us, we do have a sunset date, because, which is might be unusual for some agencies, but we do have a sunset date, and I'll talk more about that just at the end of the slide presentation. In the year 2000, we added two more board members. Now, next slide. And so let me go over the seven board members so that you can see the makeup of the board. We start with our two city representatives. You just met them both here, Valerie and Robert. They represent the cities with and without pumping rights in the basin. Then the three municipal water districts are represented by the representatives there, Mr. Ed Chavez, Mark Paulson, and Bob Kuhn. Then we have the two producer members from Cal Domestic Water Companies and the San Gabriel Valley Water Company. So you can see there's a diverse interest that sit on our board that represent, you know, cities and municipal water districts, as well as the local water purveyors. Next slide. So looking at the areas that Water Quality Authority focuses on, we facilitate groundwater basin cleanup, and that's primarily one of our main jobs. The map I showed you earlier, that basin, big basin, divided up into five or six different areas. Each of those five or six areas has its own set of responsible parties and situations and plumes of contamination. So we're managing multiple areas of contamination where there's different responsible parties, there's different EPA project managers, there's different state regulators involved in these different areas. So that's very important. Early in our creation, in the 1990s, we were known for getting ahead of the regulatory process, which means, before I said we're non-regulatory. The one benefit of being non-regulatory is you don't have to follow the regulations. We don't have to wait for our own regulations. We can do things faster than other agencies can, and so they were able to construct groundwater treatment systems quicker and get to that contamination and keep it from spreading farther. Seek federal and state funding, that's also one of our very, our primary missions. I'll go over some of the funding that we've managed to bring into the basin here in the next slide. And then finally, we have a public outreach program as well. Here is that funding. The funding here, you can see from federal funds, we've brought in at least $126 million so far. We have what's called the San Gabriel Basin Restoration Fund that was set up by one of the local congressmen here in the valley around the year 2000. And we seek, we have an authorization for $125 million, and we go back and get appropriations off of that each year. State funding, we've brought in $60 million from different water bonds and other things, other accounts. But you'll notice down here, responsible party funds, $700 million, and that's a big number, and that's the way it should be. We also focus on making sure that those responsible parties are paying for the majority of the cleanup. And so our agency has entered into litigation with 70, 80, 70 to 80 responsible parties over the years to collect those funds that keep this groundwater remediation moving forward. Finally, I'll take a, we'll look at our legislation briefly, just, as I said, we're a, on the next slide, we're a temporary agency, so, which means someday, the idea was, well, this groundwater contamination is going to go away. Well, that hasn't happened, because guess what? There's been new contaminants discovered. We call those emerging contaminants, and even as the technology gets better, we're discovering new things, and it needs new solutions for it. So last year, we had a bill passed, extended us to July 1st of 2050, that's our latest sunset date. We had full support of all the local purveyors here, along with Sacramento. And then so, in this past year, we had a bill going through sponsored by Assembly One in Rubio, AB 279. Our funding is provided by an assessment on each prescriptive rights of acre foot. So if you have a prescriptive pumping right, you pay an assessment to us, and that's how we get our funding. We're not funded straight by the state or anything like that, but it comes straight from that. So we had a, a long time ago, we had much higher, the ability to assess a lot more, but that was lowered, and now we, because of those emerging contaminants, I explained to you, we have the need to have better capacity going forward to handle those emerging contaminants. So we had a bill put through where we could have a capacity of $20 an acre foot to assess. That does not raise the actual assessment. Here, this, so so we're clear, the city doesn't actually pay that, because the city currently doesn't have any water rights, so that's not a city thing. But this bill had no opposition, it's currently waiting for the governor's signature. And again, doesn't raise our actual assessment, and it had support from all the stakeholders in our basin as well. So our job therefore is to, again, looking at that contamination that we're dealing with, we're the agency that is responsible for being the proponent of cleaning that up, whether it's in the state or the federal level. So thank you for your time this evening, let me know if I can answer any questions for you.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, and since the water quality, meaning the water have be safe to drink, right?
Correct.
Okay, and in San Gabriel, okay, valley, almost 100% we drinking nothing but groundwater.
90% is groundwater.
Correct, okay, like West Covina, we have a lot of pumping station. And in our neighborhood, we have a BKK landfill. We have industry landfill, currently Pacific Palm, okay, and you have a Warner, okay, they have a lot of landfill, okay, surrounding. So in all this landfill, okay, have you got monitor about the drinking water, the pumping station, surrounding neighborhood, how we to avoid potential contamination of this water table with all this, okay, 1980 of all this so-called the toxic landfill from BKK south side are controlled by, okay, and DTSC by the state? So, so how you can monitor our drinking water? This is West Covina, La Pointe, okay, City of Industry and Warner, and less surrounding by all this landfill. So have you guys doing any monitoring, okay, monitoring and only make sure the drinking water is safe for our resident?
Yeah, the, the landfills are separate from the job that we do. For example, our agency, we handle what's the groundwater and that legacy contamination I described to you. You're correct, the landfills are monitored and regulated by what's now the Department of Toxic Substances Control, and they do monitor that, along with some other agencies in the basin. Right now, those are not an issue for the same groundwater contamination that we're talking about. Those are, those are separate, and right now, those don't seem to be interfering with the groundwater quality as we see it. The primary concern is what I described here this evening, and that's the plume that we've had in front of us.
So did you have, okay, on the, on your agency, you guys report to the, all the surrounding city regarding all this landfill potentially contamination to our groundwater table, okay, and how we avoid potentially gradually going down into our potentially drinking water?
Right, and I said, that's the, that's the regulatory agency, which is the Department of Toxic Substances Control. So we would not handle the BKK facility and all the other facilities.
So not, not your agency?
Right.
So, so, but you are the water quality, you are.
That's right. As I said, we're non-regulatory agency, and we're handling the contamination that was caused by the defense contractors, the.
Now, so landfill is not belong to you?
We do not handle what is caused by those facilities that you described up there. That's a state regulatory agency that handles that.
So which agency we need to talk to to make sure they, okay, monitored our landfill to our drinking water system?
Right.
Which, which agency will be?
You talked to the Department of Toxic Substances Control?
So that's DTSC.
Right. And they're the ones that handle the, there should have been a closure for that facility, as you're probably aware.
Do they have manpower to monitoring our drinking water? Okay, or this is only, because sound like we have a lot of bureaucracy and then?
Right, so right now, what they're monitoring, and I'm not that familiar with the BKK, except that that's, the drinking water zone is a different zone, I don't want to get too technical with you, but the, where the contamination lies on those areas does not directly connect with the drinking water zone that we're talking about here today.
Oh, really?
You're different.
So what's the difference between the water quality and the quality water that we opened up the faucet is coming out to all the household?
Right, what you're opening up in the, your household is, is treated water that's meeting all the drinking water requirements of the state, and that is completely different than the other system that you're talking about.
So your agency will be monitoring what kind of quality, water quality?
Okay, if you're talking about drinking water quality, you're talking about the division of drinking water. It's through the State Water Resources Control Board, that is their agency, that is the agency that permits all the drinking water and all throughout the state, including the San Gabriel Valley here as we know it, all the water purveyors, all their drinking water systems, all their wells, everything showing up in your tap is treated and permitted per the Department of Drinking Water Regulations.
So got it, so, so I'm asking about, I'm sorry, I'm just, I want to be educated, okay, by you. So in your agency, so what is your jurisdiction to control the quality of water quality? So while you monitor factory or any of a business or, okay, how, what is you are monitoring or, okay, try to clean up some of the contamination?
If I understand what you're asking, our agency is non-regulatory. What we do is provide funding and we provide facilitation. So we help the EPA and the Department of Toxics and the local water purveyors come together and coordinate between what it takes to go find that funding, to identify where the contamination is, to build the treatment plants, and to ultimately, once you have the treatment plants built, you have to find a place to put that water that you're treating, that you're taking out of the ground. So then we coordinate with who can take that water, and we identify the various water systems that can take that water and serve it to customers, because the one thing that you also have to remember when you're treating this much groundwater is, you're pulling a lot of groundwater, a lot of water out of the ground, and you just don't want to waste it as a resource. You don't want to just spread that water and send it down the channel, you want to use it as drinking water source. And so we identify where that water can be primarily used as a drinking water source here in our valley. So those are some of the coordination issues that we do.
I don't waste my time. I can ask more, but I, yeah, my time.
I could answer more too. I'm happy to, I'm happy to meet with you afterwards.
Okay, well, Councilman Cantos.
I'm Madam Mayor. Randy, first appreciation to Mayor Protem Munoz and Mayor Gonzalez for being here, and to you. What are any action steps that, that you may have for us and for residents to take in terms of things that we can do to partner with you as residents? I know that you work at an institutional level, but are there other, are there things that we as residents can be doing to support your efforts, or is that more something that is done at a, at an organizational or agency level?
Yeah, generally speaking, it's on a higher level. What we do have to do is try to do a public campaign to keep the public informed of what's going on, and that there is, and let them know there is an agency, every once in a while, I get an article in the newspaper, talks about some kind of contamination that was discovered, and they need to know that there is an, there is an agency, our agency and other agencies, that are responsible for looking at that, make sure that someone's taking care of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, next, we're going to move on to, I'd like to invite Lucia Para. Please welcome Ms. Para to the front for her dance presentation.
Good evening. What's happening?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your presence. Our community of West Covina, so I think we're here for the last half.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to present myself. My name is Lucia Para, and I'm the director for the West Covina Dance Company. I've been living here for my community for the last 40 years. I teach Unified School District Fine Arts, and this is a new program. And my girls, they belong to the West Covina High School, and we're here, very proud to present our heritage, which is the Month of Hispanic Heritage, and this is from Jalisco. Ladies and gentlemen, please, let's give them a big round of applause.
Let's give, hello? Let's give these ladies though, an applause here, they did a wonderful job, and their outfits are beautiful. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Beautiful. I would like to share something with you, all of you. So my group, it's 77, 77 or 78 students, all ages, from three years old to 78 years old, and teen and the adults, oh, they come back. They, we're going to go to New York, New York City, representing the, the West Covina, our city, West Covina, we're going to be in New York on Broadway and also Times Square.
Wow, congratulations. Good job.
Well, can you hear me? We are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month in September 15 through October the 15th, and it is an opportunity to celebrate the cultural heritage, countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful dance that you did, and I think we all enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate all of you, and you are such a wonderful audience. Thank you so much for having us.
Okay, and pictures. Mayor, Mayor, can I read it quick? I want to say something. September 30, the Moon Festival, they're going to have a big number to perform for our attendee, okay, so show up.
These ladies will be there, so September 30, these ladies will be dancing for us again.
California Native American Day provides an opportunity to celebrate the heritage and traditions and resilience of California Native American people. Recognizing September the 22nd, 2023, of the Fourth Friday of September, as California's Native American Day will foster a greater understanding and appreciation of the historical and contemporary issues faced by California Native American communities. I'd like to invite Juan Villa. Thank you, Mr. Villa, for being here.
Sure thing. Well, first off, thank you, Mayor, Council, for issuing this proclamation, and the residents of West Covina. My name's Juan Villa, I'm here on behalf of Assembly Member James Ramos, who's the first Native American in the state's legislature. He also chairs the California Native American Legislative Caucus. This isn't about him, but this is about California Native Americans and, and the first inhabitants of this land. And so I encourage you, this Friday, September 22, and before and after that, to learn about California Native Americans, rich history, culture, and also think about, it's not only history, California natives are here, they're present, they're governing, they're governing in our state, and they can be your neighbor as well. And so I want to thank you again, Mayor and Council, for issuing this proclamation for California Native American Day, which is this Friday, September 22. There will be an event at Cal State San Bernardino specifically for California Native American Day, where different tribes from across the state will be represented. There will be food, culture will be shared, and just a great opportunity to learn more about California natives. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, we, some of us can make it out there to San Bernardino so that we can celebrate with you, and thank you so much for being here to be part of our city here and, and accept our proclamation. Fresh off the press, it'll be here, yes, so, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will be, we will be adjourning this meeting in memory of Asuti Sharon Talba, lovingly known as Sharon, passed away on August 29th, 2023, in West Covina. Born on May 2nd, 1941, in Kansas City, Missouri, Sharon lived a life filled with love, laughter, and cherished memories. Sharon and her husband, Bob, moved to West Covina when they were married in 1965. They raised their family in West Covina and became valued members of the neighborhood. Sharon was an incredible mother to her two daughters, Sheila Crowe and Lana Hernandez. Sharon's unwavering support and guidance shaped the lives of her children and taught them the values of kindness and empathy. Sharon had a deep appreciation for family and truly treasured spending time with her loved ones. In addition to cherishing time with her family as they build priceless memories together, Sharon enjoyed caring for her pets, playing bingo, and visiting casinos, and taking trips with her husband. Sharon's spirit will forever be remembered for the love and kindness she bestowed upon those around her. In addition to her husband and daughters, Sharon leaves behind a sister, brother, two grandsons, four granddaughters, four great-grandchildren, and many friends. Sharon touched the lives of many and will be missed. Now, okay, let's move on to the presentation of the proclamation. Here we have our proclamation. California Native American Day. Now therefore, I, Rosario Diaz, Mayor of the City of West Covina, on behalf of the entire City Council, dear hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2023, the Fourth Friday, as California Native American Day. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, let's move on to oral communications. We will now move on to oral communications. Anyone that would like to address the council, please fill out your orange card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk.
Mayor, we have nine speaker cards.
Okay. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called.
John Shoemaker, followed by Corleste Reniki, followed by Bill Elliott. John Shoemaker?
It's nice to hear that Councilmember Wu is concerned about drinking water in our city. You know, unfortunately, he didn't realize two separate agencies and everything else. Too bad he doesn't show the same concern when it comes to the landfill in our city itself, because the last thing I heard was that the top cap was still damaged and hadn't been repaired. Hopefully, that's wrong. You know, and also was bound and determined to have a fireworks display in a high-fire hazard zone that was leaking methane gas. You know, just thinking as I say things like this, when you're talking, how much fun it's going to be as a member of the city council, being able to say, you know, that you contradict yourself all the time. But then it dawned on me, if the rumors that I hear are true, you won't be here. So we can take it from there. You know, what I find absolutely amazing is that when you think certain people, namely, and I'm going to point to the mayor, that she will be looking at her husband with love and adoration, smiling as he's wishing death upon people who are in this council chamber. When I sit here and go, how much lower can they go? How much lower can they go? They find a new way, a lower version. They keep digging. You know, it's absolutely insane that you have that representing our city. You know, gets up here and gives a proclamation about, you know, our Native American neighbors and how great they are, but don't you dare speak at my party, according to her, when it comes to something that she might not completely agree with. You know, that's the sad thing. We are a joke. I shouldn't say "we." You guys are a joke. You guys are a joke. It's just amazing. You know, the people I come across from all around the city and the state, and in different offices and things like that, and you know, you're from West Covina, aren't you? Yep. I feel sorry for you, is the response. Now I know why we don't get very many things done. You know, and you sit there and just, one of the things I will do, and it's about the only thing a council member can do on their own, that's to tell the people the truth. Like, you know, our city finance director a couple of years ago said that we were going to lose, overspend $24 million a year for the next four or five years. Next budget comes out, wow, $6 million in the hole, just like it was claimed. And then trying to explain it off, you know, just sitting there, you know. I remember Chris Freeland one time, when I would ask him a question, he goes, "John, the one thing I know about you that I've learned in all the years that I've been around is that when you ask a question, you already know the answer." In most cases, I do. You know, so when it comes to finance, the people of the city are going to be assured that they're going to get true and honest answers, good or bad. They're also going to be assured, whether I agree with them or not, they're going to understand why I am voting a certain way. You know, I'm not going to do things like, well, you know, when it comes to beer and wine sales at gas stations, I think it's ridiculous, as Mr. Wu said, that we put them through this CUP and all this administrative stuff. We need to shorten it. And then tax on, agrees to tacking on, oh, you've got to put a camera out front that's tied into a system, which is an even bigger burden than doing the CUP. Then, like I said, he won't have to worry about me bringing those things up to the public. The other thing I'd like to see, too, is why can't the city attorney give a summary of the cases that are being brought against us? You know, you don't have to say what the strategy is, but just kind of explaining what they are. Let the folks know what's going on. Thank you.
Corleste Reniki, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Kathy Navarro.
Good evening. Okay, I'm Corleste Reniki, and I've lived here in West Covina for 90 years. And I am a member of the Friends of the Library, and that's who I'm here tonight for asking for your help to get our library open. It's been, it's been three and a half years since our library has been open. And the way, if the county is, gets its way, it's going to be over four years when it's open. And that's just not, that's not fair, not only to the adults, but to, we think of our kids that couldn't go to school for a while because of COVID, and then they get schools open, but they can't go to the library. And we have such a wonderful program from youth, from toddlers, on and up. We, we heard that it was going to open in the spring, this past spring, and of course, it didn't open then. But then we were told in June that the library was going to open in the fall, this fall, October or November. And so we were really excited, and we're starting to make plans for the opening. And then we hear that they came to you guys, and there's a delay of nine months for next mid-24. And that's unacceptable for a city our size. And our library, and many of the people who come to our library, we have, when our library closed, for every day, we had more people in our library than any other library in Los Angeles County, including the one in Los Angeles. So we're a really, really big part of this community. So what we are, we're going to start an emailing campaign. But what we'd like to ask for you guys is to just really be tough with them. I mean, don't accept all these excuses, but pin them down. I mean, how can, when they're telling us we're going to open in October, and then they come in, and then they say, oh, no, it's going to be nine more months, and this is a tentative opening. And you and I all know that tentative openings, it never, it never works out, right? It's going to be after that, yeah. So we just want you to be tough on them, to put pressure on them. If none of us do anything, then they're just going to think that's fine with us. And go ahead and send their workers to someplace that's putting pressure on them. So that's what we're asking, along with what we're going to do. Please, when they talk to you, if they put pressure, let's get this open before the tentative, mid-2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Elliott, followed by Kathy Navarro, followed by Douglas Forre.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor, Councilman Wu, Councilman Cantos, Councilwoman Lopez Viado. God is real. There are only two genders. Global warming is a hoax. Human flourishing requires fossil fuels. Reverse racism is racism. Open border is no border. Parents determine the education of their children. The nuclear family is the greatest form of government known to mankind. Capitalism lifts up people from poverty. There are three branches of government, not four. The U.S. Constitution is the greatest grantor of freedom in history. The council member representing the first district is trying to pass himself off as a fake Mexican. Lion Brian Tabatabai is a shameless fraud, unadulterated fraud. His name has never been Calderon. That's his wife's name. His Iranian father taught him to hate America, to loathe America, and he did a stellar job. He hates God. He hates America. He hates West Covina. He is missing in action in this community because he's so busy trying to run for state assembly before he even finishes the first term in office in West Covina as a councilman. He hates white people on a grand scale, and he teaches his high school students to hate white people, too. He says he's read Dr. Martin Luther King's works, but what has Brian Tabatabai ever done for black people in West Covina? I submit to you, not a damn thing. Black people are grossly underrepresented in West Covina's population. What has he done to change that? I will remind Lion Brian Tabatabai that Esteban Torres was a moderate Democrat, that doesn't exist anymore, who strongly opposed abortion. You forgot to mention that, didn't you? At the dedication of the West Covina Post Office, he had his nose so far up, graced an Apolitano's dress, he couldn't see the light of day. Lion Brian has literally failed the people of the first district because he's so busy campaigning for the assembly as a fake Mexican. Talk about cultural appropriation. He has proven himself to have zero time to devote to this city. He's frequently missing at most events. Spewmaker over here pointed out that Ole and Tabatabai were at the football game on social media, and Brian commented, "I love football." What has Brian Tabatabai done for West Covina?
What?
Absolutely nothing, except pander to the other filthy communists in this city who also hate America and our constitution. When my grandfather encountered communists during World War II, he killed them. Pray for our city and pray for our nation. There are evil forces working against this country, and they're, and they are personified by this shameless race hustler, Lion Brian Tabatabai. God help us all. And since I have a little time left over, I want to say it's shameful that the library has been closed three and a half years. That is absolutely shameful. Wenwen Zhang is a nice lady, but she gets up, every time she speaks, she disappoints this crowd. And the $126 million that is appropriated to the Water District, hey, who doesn't want safe drinking water? I don't know anybody that drinks water from the tap. Everybody drinks bottled water. We wash our cars, we wash our clothes, I wash my dog. We don't use that water to drink. I wish we spent $126 million on homeless veterans in Los Angeles County. That would go a very long way. Thank you very much.
Kathy Navarro, followed by Douglas Forre, followed by Matthew Smith.
I'm feeling rather nauseous. You'll have to excuse me right now. Mayor Rosario Diaz and council members, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Kathy Navarro from Project 2911. This is Maureen Hines. She is one of our black friends here, and we say thank you for letting me speak today because we're, I'm really grateful that I live in West Covina. It's a great city. It's the best city around. We have everything here, everything, and we have a great council. So I applaud you, and I say thank you, West Covina. And also, I'm here to invite you to come to our luncheon. I have tickets that I've, invitations that I've given to all of you, and I have four seats at my table if someone wants to come with me and my husband. So I would love to have you sign up. I have my card here, so just give me a call. October 28th, it's a Saturday at South Hills Country Club, and it'll be a lot of fun. We might even have some dancers. If not, Maureen and I'll dance.
The last time I was here, I spoke to you concerning my neighbors that had boats and campers on the street. I don't know what you did, but they've all disappeared. And for people to think that West Covina Council does not do anything, I am here to tell you that you do, and I'm very grateful. The boats are gone, the cars are gone, and the traffic is not impeded anymore. And I just want to thank you so much. It's on New Crest and Varela area in West Covina, and I just want to thank you so much.
And I also want to say, Brian and Rosario, you're great people. You're great people. And all of you, all of you council members, and Tony, too. Thank you for letting us speak. And God bless you, and I hope that you will, all of you, come. We'll sit at the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my phone. Douglas Four, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by Jorge Ortega.
Hi, guys. Douglas Four, owner of Bun Street, Scoop Street, Kamali Street, resident also in West Covina. Again, I'll start off by saying I do love the city. I do value the city, and I want the best for the city. The last time I came in front of you guys, we talked, and then I was targeted in my business, okay? And I do not appreciate it at all. One of your guys, a city employee, came into my business a couple days after I spoke here and demanded to talk to my manager, which no problem, talk to my manager. Not only did this in front of all my other customers, but demanded to talk to Matt and I. We are not there on a day-to-day basis, okay? And it is not right. They wanted those benches moved immediately. What we did with the benches was we stacked them all in one parking stall, okay? We had eight benches, eight picnic tables. We contacted people throughout the city that we thought might be able to use those benches because clearly we had no more use for them. And we were donating to them, these benches. We had people, we said, please come pick them up ASAP, okay? They weren't there for months. It's only been two weeks since I was here last. They came in on that Friday during my rush hour, during my lunch, and made a scene in front of my customers. And this was a city employee. I do not appreciate that. It is not, it is not right to do that to any business. You want to fine me for those tables being out there still? Send me a fine then, okay? I don't know why I was targeted, okay? I don't know if this person was a lone wolf that came or if he was directed by someone. I don't have any beefs with anybody in this city, okay? I'd rather not have any beefs with anybody. But why this gentleman came in and came after me, I have no clue, and it makes me sick to my stomach. He was from the code enforcement. Also, we got a fine for having a porta potty in front of Scoop Street from code enforcement. A porta potty, really? Who, we don't have a porta potty in front of Scoop Street, so please don't say I wasn't targeted, okay? This has been going on for a while. Someone's clearly, that works for this city, doesn't like me or Matt or our businesses. But come on, who is, when code enforcement goes and does something, who's looking at these fines before they go out and come to a business owner? We're just trying to work here. You know, this is, it is ridiculous. It is ridiculous that he comes into my business and demands, and he knew us by name, too. So is he behind me in this audience right now? We know who this was that came into my business, you know? This is sad, and I don't appreciate it, you know? I, I just, it is beyond words that someone would come into their, into a business and wreak havoc that is a city employee. We have enough with the homeless wreaking havoc. We have enough with other people and having to clean up every morning. But a city employee coming and then he sits in our seats right outside and says, these have to be moved immediately. We're in the middle of a lunch rush, you know? And we then even explained to him, they are donated, the company is coming, we've asked them to come, they are donated. And he then called us a liar. You're lying about this. I would like a public apology to my customers and to my general manager from the city employee. I don't care about myself, but I would like a public apology. This is not right that a city employee is doing this, that we're paying for. He then sat in his car, and I know it because it was a West Covina car that sat out there. He sat in his car and then took pictures from his car of us. It's just not right. When is enough enough? You know, somebody sent him in there. Or was he a lone wolf? I'm pretty sure someone sent him in there, you know? And I'm not going to stop until I find out who sent him in there. But I would like a public apology from him and his department and his department head. I'd like a phone call from his department head apologizing. It's not right. Thank you, guys. Still love the city. This isn't right.
Thank you.
Matthew Smith, followed by Jorge Ortega, followed by R. Robinson.
I do agree with what Doug has stated. I'm not going to speak any further on it, but I do stand by what Doug has stated tonight. I am here representing two other organizations that trust me with their information to share with you. The first one is San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball. As you know, I represent, and the fields are looking good. And we had an incident on a field that we had to switch fields right away during one of our games. And I want to compliment the city and their grounds crew because they, they jumped in, went right to Yankee Stadium, got it all ready for us, about 20-minute delay, and we're back going again on our schedule. So when I see something done right and appreciative, we certainly want to recognize that as well. The other board I sit on is a school board, it's San Jose Charter Academy, and Blue Rib, National Blue Ribbon Awards came out today. There are 353 total schools in the U.S., 33 in California, and West Covina's San Jose Charter Academy was one of the Blue Ribbon winners. And like I said, I'm on the board, and we are extremely proud of the tireless efforts of the, the administration, staff, and students that work there. So I wanted to make sure that the kids and employees are recognized for that school in West Covina as well. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Jorge Ortega, followed by R. Robinson, followed by David Schwartz.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. Thank you for having me or listening to us. I'm part of the West Covina Board for the Youth Program for Cheer and Football. We're the West Covina Bruins. I also am part of the Sports Council. Last meeting I came and I invited you guys to come out, and not one of you showed up. So right now, we do have a big issue on the field where we're trying to address behind the scenes with Pauline, Roxanne, and Michael, and we have no conclusion yet. They've given us an extension till Friday before they remove the lights. This is in the middle of our season, which is going to affect all of our teams. We're now part of Pop Warner, which is a national scale, and we have a lot of teams going undefeated. On top of being undefeated, we do have a lot of student athletes with scholar potential to be recognized at a national level. I know a lot of you guys come out, you know, during opening days and homecoming ceremonies, and we're all about the kids. But right now, our city is, is not supporting our youth programs. So we do need your help. We have about 400 kids in our program that are not going to be able to come out after hours because you are removing the lights. I know the last message was at 3 o'clock today where they tried to go, I think, pay $4,000 and for us to pay $8,000. So this money that's going to be coming out from our program is going to be affecting our programs for next year. We're trying to bring a challenger program. So what that is, this is the first program that we have as a West Covina Bruins since 1965 that would be bringing out blind kids, autistic kids, pretty much any disabled kid that will be able to come out and participate in flag football. So we are asking you guys to help keep our money in-house to support our kids, give it back to the community. All of our money is, it goes, it goes back into equipment, into uniforms, reconditioning of, of gear. Last meeting, I was hearing Ms. Letty saying about charging about lights. I personally don't think, you know, our citizens should be paying additional, plus our taxes for lights. I'll be more than happy to, you know, sit down with all of you guys, show us our books, show us where all our hours and manpower go. We have about 125 volunteers that help run the program. There's no way the city can sustain it. There's no, no way you guys can be there from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, have to drive to Mowau, Sultana, be there six hours to support a team. You know, this is what we're doing to support our youth out here, and we're asking you guys for support with the lights to be able to have the season for the rest of the 2003, 2004 season. Thank you.
Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by David Schwartz, followed by Wenwen Zhang.
The U.S. government is making war on its own people covertly through the conversion of the chemical and bio warfare program into a public health emergency medical countermeasures program and is working in collaboration with globalist institutions and other national governments around the world to make war on all people. Unquote, Catherine Watt. They're killing a lot of people, and these are war crimes. This war is illegal and is done by rogue actors without proper authority. That includes General Lloyd Austin and the ongoing D.C. federal court case. This, what I just told you is well scrubbed from the internet. In order to find anything, you'll have to find the, go to the D.C. federal court documents or attorneys Todd Callender or Ray Flores out of San Diego. I mean, our, our news media, they don't, they don't report on important stories. So there's that. So the, the biotech-sponsored bioweapon emergency continues, and the government is about to double down by repeated lockdowns, mask mandates, and emergency powers, including a new round of safe and effective experimental gene therapy vaccines, which we know are effective because they are tested on 12 mice for a couple weeks. Honestly, adverse effects are not currently known, but more innocent people will die absent informed consent. The package insert is still blank. Liberty, life, and happiness don't have to be curtailed by enduring a second round of lockdowns and continuing states of phony emergency scandals. The trap being set by the World Health Organization pandemic treaty, a threat that emerges, that emerged two months ago and, and needs to be totally rejected by Congress. A World Health Organization becomes your doctor. The First Amendment is suspended. This formula includes we eat bugs, own nothing, and we have a happy communist agenda and media censorship, combined with media censorship and an unconstitutional CIA-directed psychological operation. You know, it's been going on for three years. Our future is, I'm going to describe in this list of 20 points. Implement vaccine passports, which excludes people from society if they don't repeatedly take experimental new clot-shot booster injections, and endorse global digital health mandates, digital health certificates. Two, implement social credit scoring, social rewards, and mandatory digital ID systems that give brownie points when people comply with official mandates and, and people resist, who resist government tyranny, abuse, removal of God-given rights, demonstrate or petition the government for grievances. Three, tyranny is easy, is easier in an urban setting. Move most of humanity into AI-governed 15-minute smart city concentration camps. Maui became the model of the world's first smart city. The World Economic Forum wants Maui Lahaina recently destroyed, destroyed by directed energy weapons like 9/11. This was not an act of nature. This is an act of warfare. Four, limit the distance that city people can go from their homes to 15 to 20 minutes. People will need permits to go further. Freedom is not good. Five, install digital currencies that can be controlled by the rulers, like Canada's Trudeau against the truckers. He'll decide how you spend your own money. Your income and children belong to the state communist style. Owning and spending funds must be limited by governments. The state determines how your children are raised because freedom is not a good thing. Six, eliminate ownership of private property. Everything must be rented.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
David Schwartz, followed by Wenwen Zhang, followed by Walter Cronner.
You'll own nothing and you'll be happy. I still have, I've been trying to get through the 14, the 20 points, but I only got through six.
Thank you.
Well, I'll see you next time.
You know, it's funny because I'm doing a follow-up from two weeks ago when I got hooked off by the cane for the overtime. So he's going to have to do the same then. I am doing this follow-up from my speech of two weeks ago. I handed out packages to everybody, including the assistant manager, to, because I think you did say to me at the end of my speech that you were going to look into it and you don't see a problem with, with adopting the resolution. So inside your package there, I have a list, a list of all the cities that have already have adopted the resolutions. And I also put in there the three letters that, that Jason Moss sent, directed to the mayor with carbon copies to all of you as well. I also put in there an op-ed piece written by the executive director, Jason Moss, that was printed in December 2022 in several local publications, and the topic basically was, Jews need others to stand with us to confront antisemitism. In fact, I forgot to put my yarmulke on since we're talking about that. So anyways, I hope you guys look that over and, and do like what I asked on our speech, my speech last, two weeks ago. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. The numbers are there for, the executive director will be, he would love to come in front of you and speak to you guys about it. Oh, and if you know, what I sent to you guys, the bottom of it, I compute, my printer wasn't working well, so the very bottom got rubbed out on some of them. So I taped the director's information there for you. So that's enough of that. I also want to talk about this beautiful lady that talked about the library. I think she has a great point, and I kind of made a joke about it last, the last meeting before I came up. You know, Disneyland was built in one day and one year, and look how big and complicated that was. And they can't have a library in our, in our city, and it's taken already three and a half, three and a half years, and it's still going? So I, I think this is a shame for our city that we don't have a library. I grew up here, six, I'm more than 60 years in West Covina. I used to walk to the library with my father and my brothers every week. The thing with this other gentleman right over here with his table issue, you know, this is another thing that I've said to you guys. I, I've said that the bigger the government, the smaller the citizen. This poor man has three businesses here, and it's private property, right? Am I, am I wrong that his tables were on private property? And there's a code enforcement guy coming in the middle of his business to do it? I'm just hearing this there by sitting here. I'm listening just like you guys are. And I, I don't know exactly what happened, but it sounds to me, from what he said, it's, it doesn't, it's not kosher. The other thing is, this Sunday night and, and Monday is the holiest day for Jews. It's called Yom Kippur. It means, it means Yom Kippur, Day of Atonement. So we atone, and I want to say that if I ever came up to you or talked to you guys rudely or anything, I want to apologize. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wenwen Zhang, followed by Walter Cronner, followed by Mr. G.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pretend, City Council Members, and Miss City Manager Staff, and all community members. I'm Wenwen Zhang, West Covina Library Manager. I, first of all, I wanted to thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time and letting us know your concerns and thoughts. I will certainly pass along to my upper management.
Can you please, sorry, please address the council.
We apologize for the inconvenience, the library's closure. We apologize for the inconvenience, the library's closure, and so, as you mentioned, the library, we are aiming to reopen mid-year next year. Yeah, so this is update, I wanted, I just got an update about this, and, but I wanted to let you know that as, as the library closure extended, LA County Library, you know, took the advantage of the time to plan much-needed aesthetic and also operational improvements for all the public areas. So what I can tell you is that West Covina Library will be back, much upgraded for our residents to, to, to use and enjoy, yeah, enjoy. And so I, I will keep you posted, and I wanted to also say it again, during library closure, we continue, continue to offer residents access to library materials, and also telephone reference services through our sidewalk service, and, and that the sidewalk service is at the library, and we offer the services 20, I'm sorry, 40 hours a week, Tuesday to Saturday. And in-person library services are being offered at the neighboring libraries, including Baldwin Park Library, which is about two miles away, and the Sunkist Library is about three miles away. Again, I apologize for this, the closure, the inconvenience the closure has caused our residents.
I didn't want to take up your time. I just wanted to make sure if you're done.
So I just wanted to make another two announcements, just really quick.
Okay, go ahead.
West Covina Library, we have laptops, kits with internet access for customers to check out for six weeks. So if you need one, call the library to reserve and pick up at the sidewalk service. And also, if you're planning a trip or two, a state, state, how to say, California State Park, and you can borrow a parks pass at the library and to get a free, let's say, vehicle day entry, like a, they, vehicle day, how to say, the free pass to the, to the, to over 200 state parks, state parks. And so if you plan to, to visit a state park, just call the library to reserve a parks pass and pick up at the sidewalk service.
Thank you. Before closure, I know the library was already beautiful. They enhanced the children's area. It was just wonderful. And then when you came in for the first closure, you said it was the AC, the whole unit. I think the residents would like to know, what exactly is being renovated? What exactly is, what are they doing to, to it? And are they actually going in and doing the work, or are they just neglecting it and then coming back? What is causing the delays for this? So if you can explain that.
The library was closed, you know, before, at COVID, the library first closed because, because of the COVID. When we reopened it, we reopened in 2001, and have limited in-person service. And then we officially closed the fourth renovation in August 2001. And at that time, we closed the fourth renovation. And then, at that time, it's still COVID, so I believe we had a lot of supply chain delays, supply chain delays that delayed the time. They do not have supply, they cannot do things. So old, like AC units will be replaced, and first, we planned the AC units and the seating tiles, and, and also lighting and those kind of things. And because of this delay, so the library said, oh, it's delayed, so we have a little bit of time, so we added more projects in it. And then we said, oh, we're going to do some upgrades. Okay, upgrades. And then, so gradually, we added more and more projects because, you know, because of the delay. And then there's enforcing, how to say, enforcing construction delays also. So there's a lot of challenges. So right now, everything inside the library, the public library, will be brand new. And the AC will be changed, the elevator will be changed, the new one, and then also the older furniture, including the shovings, everything, service desk and the floor, and also technology, a lot of new technology, and the power outlet, because a lot of customers asking for power outlet. And then that, those need to be put it under the ground and for the layout. And so there's a lot of work, just, just a lot of work. And then there's, yeah, challenge because it's a COVID.
Do they have a plot plan or anything that they can distribute to the community, or is it on the website that lists all these things, or to see what's coming?
I, I can pass along to my management. I'm not, this is a, how to say, this is a capital project. I'm not, I'm not involved, and so I do not have the updates. I cannot just say, say something. Yes.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I, I know it's kind of tough for you, because you came over here, everything, every time you just have to apologize, apologize. But I think, I'm sorry, I think the problem is, I think residents, including ourselves, we want to see what's going on. Have you been inside the library? Sounds like you even don't know what, no? So you're not inside?
I'm working at a neighboring library.
So you're not, you're not inside, so you don't know what inside? Any worker, somebody walk over there? Okay, but every time I pass through, I don't see anybody there. So I don't know if they are really working or not. Or maybe next time, we can invite your supervisor or somebody in, in charge of construction, come over here to explain to us what's going on. Show us some pictures, show us why delay is, because it's been a long time, and, and our children really need library, okay? If you want people to use library more, but you closed down for so long, okay, and it's not, it's inconvenient for our children go to neighboring cities, since we have this right over here. And, and how many square feet for our library? About 3,000, 4,000 square feet? How many square feet? So if you see all the construction for all these mansion homes, they build hundreds, some of them already within a year already built up. How can the remodeling will take so long? It just doesn't make any sense. So, so just wanted you can share with your supervisor in charge of construction, okay? They need to give us some reason, okay? Because I think a lot of residents is very impatient right now, including ourselves. We need some answer, we want some, okay, and action, okay, to tell us how soon you can finish up, like, middle of us, of us, okay, next year, it may be go delayed to the end of next year, okay? And we still have no library.
I certainly will pass along your message to my supervisors, and thank you, thank you very much. And library is big, and we have two stories, and it's over 40,000 square feet, and it is big, and it's an old building. It's an old building, when you, sometimes you just like at home remodeling, sometimes you open one thing and you see something, other things need to be fixed. But I'm, I have no details at all, just, just telling you, I have no details, but I certainly pass along to my supervisors and see, give you answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Cronner, followed by Mr. G.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. I've lived here since 1978. I sent you a big, long email, Mayor Proterm, Walter Cronner. Live right across the building, 755 West Covina Project, the apartment building. For four decades, it's gotten bad. The shootings, trash, beer bottles, I mean, I, I started to make pictures. This is what we find in front of our house every day, diapers. They ride around on their bikes, ride in and out of our front yards and steal whatever they can. So everybody's got cameras, so I confronted that guy. He slashed my tires and a few other cars. There's a police report. So, but to add, you know, the, the shootings and everything, the city of Los Angeles County, Covina County, where you, this is the building that, all the trouble. We live here, a couple of my neighbors are right here, and so this is Covina County right here. So they went to permitted parking. So the 30 cars that parked on their street and cluttered their neighborhood is now parking here. We can't even back out of our driveways at times, so crowded. We're asking for permitted parking on our little street, because we're off of Sunset, and that this building should provide parking for its residents, and how many people are living in that building? So the new problem that occurred, I have a friend that's a teacher over at Beatty Baptist, they had to put up bars, because now they're finding condoms in their hallways in the morning, along with their banners being graffiti'd. Well, we're finding the same condoms on our street. So the dark car, the windows with the dark windows pull up and park on our street late at night, because you hear the doors open and close, you smell the pot, and then they throw their beer bottles in this middle divider right here. I need your support and help. I need help. It's scary. It's never been this bad. Who's in charge of that building? I went over there and asked them, because they used to have two security guards and keep track of things, and the security guard used to keep the street really clean, and if stuff was going bad. Well, they sold the building, and the new building owners don't really care, but those people are paying almost $3,000 for a three-bedroom, two-bath apartment, right? So if you look at the rents. But us, Victor, Miguel, my other neighbors over here, we're catching the brunt of the filth every day. They come over and change their battery in the car, they throw it in that medium divider. It's killing off our city's shrubbery. It's almost all gone. I asked Jerry and Brian Servante, planning and engineering, so he finally had the code enforcement come out, because today's street cleaning, first and third Tuesday of every month. So they were out this morning, and they must have wrote, whatever, 70 tickets. And then they, the street cleaner waited, because the street hasn't been cleaned for months. Filthy trash, dirt, oil, everywhere. I need your support, just like I text you. What do I do? I mean, the neighbors are nervous, bars are going up, I'm, you know, people want to protect themselves, because, anyway, that's what I'm here. Oh, the other thing, Victor, he has a big truck. So right here, where we pull in, the Sunset, it's a street off the street, that's Covina County, this is West Covina City. So there's, the reds are all gone, these people park in the red. If a fire truck or ambulance had to pull in the street, they're not going to get down the street, and then there's no place to turn around here. They wouldn't, it's backing out of my driveway is hard at times. They, they just, you just, it's just out of control.
Did you provide that information to our clerk?
I have a question. So you say which building is, which building is that?
It's the big apartment building that has 100 units, Beatty Baptist Church.
What street is that? Sunset?
Yeah, between.
Does it belong to the county? West Covina, right?
A portion of it is West Covina, and I believe it's Covina or County, you're right.
It's, it's County. It's our jurisdiction or County jurisdiction?
Part of it's ours, part of it's County.
So we still have a jurisdiction to send the code enforcement over there?
There's portions of it that is in West Covina.
Okay.
On our street, we're asking for permitted parking like the Covina County did, keep the cars off our street, so we're not hearing doors open and close all night. And then the kids in the apartment building, they can't smoke pot or drink beer, because mom and dad won't do it. So they come over and sit behind the bushes, or they park in their cars, but when they're done, what happens? Beer bottles breaking glass, trash, broach clips. My granddaughter, I won't even let, my son-in-law's over there too. I don't even want my granddaughter there, she's only 16 months old. We got to do something.
Got it, sir.
Thank you.
When I got back from Vietnam, I've lived in this house ever since, pretty much. This is the first time I've ever had to come ask for help.
We, we will try to clean it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. G.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about four things that were talked about. In that neighborhood, I had a phone call yesterday, a friend, her daughter is now being trafficked. One of those houses over in that neighborhood is what they call a trap house. I have the address, and it's sad, because it's, the backyard borders West Covina. It's in the county section. I know that you only have so much jurisdiction, but it's something that's got to work as a mutual together, okay? Also, youth football. I played at Cortez Park. My brother played at Cortez Park. My brother got a scholarship. My brother played Division One. The only reason why I'm even slightly successful is because I played football, not soccer, tried baseball, not that good, okay? But because of football, and I always thought, man, it would be great to have lights there. So when this guy, this man spoke about how important youth football is, it's a backbone of society, literally. It's a group of men, a group of boys, learning to work together. There are 12 people involved, the coach, being the 12th man, but 11 individuals working as a unit. Can you give me another sport, another time, where you can get 12 people together on the same page? In the same book, doing the same direction? You play, you coach football? Each play is guaranteed to go for a touchdown, if everybody does the right thing, or if everybody blocks. So youth football and lights are important to this city, to the youth, to the future, so people learn to stand up. These men are standing up, they don't want to see evil. Evil only exists when good men don't stand up and say something they need to stop. Library, okay? My buddy Dave, his parents walked him. My parents drove me to the library. I have two, two things in my possession I'm very proud of. The Library of Congress, library card, and the Library of Alexandria, library card. So we need to get this back together, like Congressman, Congressman, I mean, Councilman Wu said. Got to get people there, got to have quality, have somebody fall there. If they're taking their time, somebody needs to get up there and say, hey, what's the schedule? What's that, give us pictures, give us an update. If it's an EPA issue, let's handle it. But the thing that blew me away two weeks ago, and I know is not malice, but as, as somebody who works for the city, an employee, literally saying, we shouldn't have somebody do the job because they have a title. US Marines, aviators, and I think it's a lieutenant colonel, that's about one or two steps down from a general. They spend two weeks in the field, just like this 16-year-old kid who's not getting along, but wants to play sports, but he's got to go to the military, because he wants to support his family, or the 17-year-old kid, or the kid who doesn't have anything. That's the grunt, what they call the grunt. That aviator goes in the field with him together, so there's no arrogance on his part. There's only 30 employees? Do you need that many managers? I had, close to 800 people underneath me at one time. If I saw trash, I picked it up. They always say, why are you always here? Because it was my job to be there. So not that anything was malice, but to say, oh, just because they have a title, they can't do the job? Maybe if they did the job, they'd understand it. And also, real quick, when I ask for improvement, I really don't care about the past, I want to know what you're going to do for the future. That's why you're here, you're going to set the tempo. So it's nice that you've improved, but how about more improvement of higher standards and values, to give this city what it really deserves? The third safest city in America. I appreciate your time, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speaker slips, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Acting City Manager, can you respond to some of the speakers?
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members, yes. One of the big items that was brought up, I think, through various speakers was the lights at Cortez Park. So staff is working with Joseph and George with the Bruins, and we are looking to come to a resolution. We do understand that it's a vital program in our community, and we want to continue to be a positive partner with the Bruins organization. So there's some lighting issues that need to be addressed, and we, we will be addressing them with them. So just wanted to do that. Also...
Excuse me, Mayor Proterm has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so from, from what I understand...
So from what I understand, next year, there's not going to be a lighting issue because...
Correct. So yes, the city is spending over $1 million in putting in new Musco lighting, which is state-of-the-art lighting for sports facility or sports fields. So it's just this one season that we have to get through with the Bruins. And I believe depending on when it gets installed, there might be impacts to other field usage at Cortez Park. So we do have to work through that.
So I guess, I guess I'm having trouble understanding, you know, they are in the middle of the season. You know, we have, you know, I believe like over a $70 million budget with millions of dollars in reserve. I just don't understand why, why this is an issue considering this is going to be a one-time cost. Why are we just not providing the lights for the season? I think that's, you know, one of the things that as a council priority we've had in terms of youth sports, in terms of services, you know, I just, I'm not, I'm not understanding why this, this wasn't taken care of and why it came to here. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, I mean, this is, this is a one-time, they're in the middle of the season. I believe we had ordered some, some temporary lights that didn't come in, and so this is kind of why we're in this position?
There were some lights that were ordered. They were taken to other parks for other field, fields that needed them. There is lights that were moved from the football field to the baseball field, and we're getting to the bottom of why they were moved. So there was some changes that, you were right, we should have anticipated this and been better prepared. And that's why we want, like I mentioned, we do want to be a good partner with the Bruins.
Right.
We understand that it is the middle of the season, that it's a one-time, hopefully lighting issue that we will not incur next year moving forward.
I think that the big issue I'm having is that this is a volunteer organization. You have hundreds of parents that are spending thousands of hours for free providing our community with, with what, you know, what we've been pushing for as a city government. This is kind of where you step in and, you know, again, I mean, I would understand if it was the million dollars in new lighting that was necessary that hadn't been planned, but this is a temporary cost. I believe it's in your authority to just have taken care of. And so, you know, I don't know what we as a council have to do to make sure it gets taken care of. But this, this shouldn't, this shouldn't be a stress on, on that league or those parents, those volunteers. I think this is a position where the city steps in and is the great partner, has them finish their football season, and then we move forward and everyone is good. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, okay. My understanding, when last time they asked this question, okay, and the answer is January of this year, couple of the football field, okay, light had been moved to the baseball field?
Yes, this past January, I believe that some of those lights were moved.
Somebody approved in January, remove the light, but currently it's a football season, right?
Correct.
So can we, since right now, city is paying like $4,000 to have a portable light? We just moved the light so we don't have to spend that $4,000 since the football season and have a normal lighting. I know in May, we should have all these very advanced LED light, but, but it's still seven months away. So in this football season, is that possible? We can maybe move the light from the baseball field back to the football season so they can...
So...
Because right now, to go into the bylaw disallowing, too complicated, I think we should, okay, right now, it's just satisfy their season, okay? And this is just my, my thinking, possible that can be, okay? We solve the issue because you don't want to buy new light since we have them put a million-dollar new light already. So, and just temporarily, we just swap, move the light back so they have their season. Everybody be happy after, and though, right? So, and we don't have to pay $4,000 for the portable light, doesn't make any sense. And for them to fundraising or something, so in that way, okay, possible this would be the solution. Because the problem is the baseball field, but now it's not the baseball season, right? So in that way, problem solved.
So I guess our staff is working on that.
It's lighting situation at the park, so we're just going to transfer the lighting issue from one sport to another. I understand that football is in season and we do want to accommodate them, but if we move the lighting, then it's going to impact the baseball league.
Baseball is not the season right now, right? They, they not have a competition.
It's not regular season for them.
So in that way, they can practice in the daytime till in May, when the season come up.
I think there'll be an impact to them as well, and I don't think that they would be...
What if they share the lights? Mayor Protem?
Somebody have to be disappointed.
Well, I guess, I guess I don't, I don't understand why we have to disappoint anyone. I mean, they're, they're in, they're in mid-season. I mean, you know, to, to not provide them with lights and have them cancel the season or have them not be able to extend into playoffs or, or just have them not be able to practice because of nighttime. And then, you know, football is a very violent physical sport and you put kids in danger by doing that. Again, I just, this is, this is something that at a city, at a staff level, should, should have been handled. And, and, you know, the, the cost is very, very minimal. It's really one of those things that, that is really, you anticipate that these are temporary costs that the city can cover. I mean, we're talking $4,000 a month, we're talking possibly four months, so possibly $16,000. From what I understand, we've, we've possibly going to cover three-quarters of the cost. I don't understand, you know, if we're going to cover 12, why we are going to be asking them for four. Just, the city, you know, I think from our priorities that we've given as a council, this, this would be something we would, we would cover, especially since we are going to have the permanent fix for next year. I could understand if we didn't have a permanent fix, then you, you don't want this just to be an ongoing cost. But this is a one-time cost that the residents of West Covina would appreciate. I don't know if, you know, you'd get 100% vote if you put it on a ballot, but I'm sure saving Pop Warner football would, would be in the 90%, you know, as an expenditure. Thank you.
Again, my, my suggestion is just, since they've been moved from their field to the baseball, I think should maybe move back, okay? And since right now it's football season, okay, and another baseball season, so less people use the baseball, okay, field right now. So why we put the light useless over there, light over here? So, so they can finish their season. Next year, we have a beautiful LED, a Moscow light or something, okay, and hopefully everybody happy. But currently, we just have to get this thing, okay, resolved.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Would it be within staff purview? Would it be within staff purview just to resolve this by spending whatever the 4,000 or 16,000 and just getting it done and just allowing the teams to play without there being any hindrance, whether it be to baseball or football? I mean, if the total is only 16,000, is that just something that's already within purview just to authorize?
Yes.
So is there any direction that's needed from us or can you just do it?
This isn't on the agenda.
Right.
Right, right.
Let the staff decide.
Part of the discussion too is finalizing some kind of agreement with them. It was something that the, the city gave upfront and we wanted to make sure that the terms that we're providing, where both parties are aware. So thank you.
Okay. Continue.
The other item was Bun Street owner. There's, so the table incident, I'm apologizing for the miscommunication. I know that there was some information that we were going to move them on that Friday before Labor Day weekend. And then there's confusion that we were going to extend it since, I guess, staff and you guys and you as the property owners had an arrangement. We kept the Friday removing of the barricades that the city owned on the parking stalls. That following week is when we saw that the benches or the tables are still in the parking stalls, which creates a hazard and liability for the city. And that's why we had staff follow up to ask them to remove them. And I believe they were removed that Friday, that following Friday. So the other thing is there's no incident or on our end regarding a potty or porta potty citation. So that's something that we can look into, but not something that we have on record. And the sidewalk is owned by the city, so it's, it's not owned by the individual business owner. So six inches from the storefront are, is owned by the city.
Councilman Wu.
I have a suggestion, and I think, I think Bun Street, Scoop Street, and Burrito Street, and it's a very important, okay, business over there. They attract a lot of business and Dog has a complaint. My suggestion is can we have a city staff, okay, invite them to sit down, okay, and to include the person, okay, to sit down to kind of find a way to see if they have a miscommunication or what's the issue? Let's find out the, how it happened, okay? Is this is what you described is exactly what happened, okay? Or they have a... So let's sit down, okay, from both sides, okay, including the person. I think in that way, we all partnership, especially Dog, okay, is our resident, okay? So I think no matter what, okay, this is important, I think, for you to, to be, okay, no misunderstanding, no any of anger toward to the city staff, okay, due to some reason. I think we need to resolve this peacefully and to have a communication. And sometimes communication is the best way for both sides to sit down and resolve this. And this is my suggestion.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
And then wanted to thank Matt for bringing up the good news about Sinozay Charter of Cami. We would definitely love to recognize them at an upcoming council meeting. So if you can get me their information since you're on the board, would love to do that. And then in regards to Walter Cronner, I'm sorry if I'm merging your last name. I believe Mylan, our code enforcement director, already spoke with you, but he'll be able, code enforcement will be able to help you address those concerns. And I think that's it for me this evening.
And, yeah.
Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the library, library issue, okay? I think city have to either make a phone call or make a request by emailing or my, our attorney to send letter to them regarding what happened, why it takes so long? Okay, I think city need to, okay, send about, okay, displeasure regarding, okay, the delay, and we have no reason, okay, to tell the resident about why the libraries still continue to delay for opening. So, so I think this is time to have a city to send a request, okay, to county, see, tell us what's going on or invite the county come over here to tell us what's going on, okay? What's the reason for all this major delay? Okay, and why all the construction is smoothly and build like hundreds of home in one year, okay? Why we cannot have remodeling done within eight months or timely matters? So, so this is, I think, a suggestion.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I agree with Councilman Wu. And if we could, I mean, that might be for, at the end of the meeting where we ask for a presentation. Actually, I wanted to go back to Bun Street. I did find it very concerning, and I know our director of code enforcement is here. I mean, I, I think it'd be, I think it's necessary that we, we find out what occurred and what, what happened and with staff and, you know, make sure that proper protocols are, are met, you know? Again, to have a small business owner or residence or anybody, you know, come to the dais and, and talk about how they were treated by, by city staff in that way is very concerning. So if we can make sure to get to the bottom of that and make sure that we repair whatever occurred.
Councilman Wu.
Again, the last one regarding the sunset, regarding their issue, they're asking for permit parking on their street. Maybe we can help them on the traffic to see how we can help them to make sure it's permit parking for the resident live over there only. So we do not have all this apartment from county that come over here encroach, so maybe...
There's an application process that they can fill out.
Would you please help them so they can find a way? And the same thing, we can find, have to request our code enforcement police to kind of, okay, and check around there from time to time, okay? And make sure we don't have all this weird thing happen over there. Okay, thank you.
City Managers' Report.
Yes. So on September 9th, we had the Second Annual dugout cookout and 9/11 tribute tournament at the Sports Flex that was held by the West Covina Fires Association. There were 17 softball teams and seven entries for the chili cook-off. Orange County Fire won the softball tournament, and I was one of the judges for the chili cook-off. So Dalton Hot Shots, which I think is from Glendora? I forgot the, but they won the chili and they had a smoked brisket in their chili, so it was delicious. But it was a really fun event, and I know some of our council members attended and Susan Rubio showed up. So we encourage everyone to participate next year, and if you want to enter your chili recipe, encourage everyone to do that. The next is the, I'm pleased to share that the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada recently awarded West Covina the Certificate of Achievement for Excellent in Financial Reporting to the City of West Covina for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year that ended in June 2022. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And so I also just wanted to note that this is the second award we've received from them this year. So we're very excited.
Yay.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Councilman Wu.
Okay, okay, I want to thank our finance directors and the team. I think I went through under 2017, 18, the horrible and that time, the situation compared with what under your leadership and previous, your predecessors, okay, and one member, okay, really kind of, okay, clean up the city and for you to be a success, continue to do a great job. And let's how this coming up. So we present, okay, and as I am a city council, I just want to show my deepest appreciation. Thank you so much and to work for us and to make this happen, okay, make our city finance healthy and with all these awards. Thank you so much.
The next item is the fee schedule update. So we had originally scheduled it for an October council meeting. We'll be bringing that back for the November 7th city council meeting for your consideration and hopefully adoption. Just last item is, or second to last is our Centennial State of the City is next Thursday, the 28th. Tickets are still available and we hope to see everyone there. It's going to be a wonderful evening. State of the City. We can answer that after the meeting. The next thing is upcoming events. We have Touch a Truck this Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 here at the Civic Center parking lot. As I mentioned, the State of the City next Thursday. And then we have the Moon Festival that it's going to be jam-packed with a lot of performances Saturday, September 30th, and that's going to be along Glendora Avenue. And then it ends with Bruno Mars and the Hooligan. So we're having a lot of performances, diverse performances from belly dancers by the Folclorico to drum dances. And then at noon is going to be the opening ceremony. Then we have District One Community Meeting with Mayor Protem. Then we have District One Community Meeting with Mayor Protem Brantabatabay Saturday, October 14th at Del Norte Park from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And then we have the West Covina Queen's Cartober Fest Saturday, October 21st from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Eastland Center. So just a couple of coming events, and that's it for me. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just because I see Chief Capelli up there. I was at the softball game, and if we can make sure our guys have cleats next year, little disappointed seeing our guys slip all over the field, can help them out a little bit. All right, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything?
Number five, please.
I'm so sorry, I missed one slide. If we can, we wanted to wish our Centennial Mayor a happy birthday. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
How old are you? Forever 29?
Exactly, 21, forever 21. Okay, thank you. And thank you. Councilman Wu, did you say five?
Two.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. With the exception of five, does someone want to move the motion?
So move.
I'll second. I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve consent calendar items one through four. Councilman Contos.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabay.
Aye.
Mayor Diaz.
Aye.
Items pass 5-0.
Okay, Councilman Wu.
Yeah, the reason I pulled number five is a flock camera, and I think flock camera is very, very effective to, when we, two years ago, when we installed. But I understand two years ago, that is, okay, and at that time, due to the financial, okay, we want to make sure we have enough money, so the PD pay forward, but look like now we have to pick up the tab for the cost. So, okay, want to know, okay, is what this, because it's a bit, a little bit different than my, okay, expectation regarding the cost, okay, the cost will be higher than, I remember the installation fee is expensive, but then monthly fee would be much cheaper. But now look like a monthly, each camera is like $200, $300. But I remember it's like $50 or $35 per camera when we go into the program, scanning the people's license plate, so we can catch, okay, people have a stolen car. So maybe city, okay, can explain to, oh, PD, okay. Hey, hi.
How are you today? Good evening.
Good evening, Captain. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you. Good evening, council staff. How are you doing? I guess I can answer that in a short form, or I can kind of give you a little history.
It's up to you.
Short form.
I'm gonna try to make it short, but I know Councilman Contos was not on the council when we first voted on this, so I'll just give him a little bit of, little bit of background. So the answer to your question, sir, it's kind of opposite. The installation fees were very minimal, but then the annual maintenance fee per camera is a set fee. So, let's see. So what I'm here tonight is to ask you to consider authorizing a new contract agreement. So currently, we are in the third year of a three-year agreement that the two years was up in August. When we were getting back, part of the clause in the contract was that we'd have to evaluate the systems, how good it did for the first two years. We come back to council year three, talk about if we want to move forward, and then where we find the money to pay for it. While we were coming back to that, Flock contacted us and said, hey, right now, we can keep you at the current pricing if you guys enter into a five-year contract, which will, in the long run, save us about $60,000. So I can explain, I think it's a, it's a good deal for everybody. But like I said, for Councilman Contos, I'd like to give a little background and context so he can come up to speed. Originally, when we, when we did, Councilman Wu did point out, the PD did pick up the first two years, which was $75,000 per year, and then it was $7,500 total for the 30 cameras for installation, $250 per camera to install in the city. The third year now, we're looking at a $75,000 cost. So we have 30 cameras installed in the city, and each camera costs $2,500 a year. That's what the leasing fee is for the camera. So 30 times 2,500 is 75,000. Flock's pricing is going up at the end of the year to $3,000 per camera. So they, they came to us and said, hey, if we, we re-up this agreement for five years, we can keep you at the $2,500 mark. But what I'd like to do is, since we're in the third year, I would like to, I don't think there's a question that the camera system has been fantastic for us, but I would like to make that evaluation because that was part of the process, just kind of give you an overview of what the system does, and then what our statistics look like and how it's helped the police department help keep our community safe. So like we said, we have 30 ALPRs, they're automated license plate readers. They've been strategically located throughout the city. The Flock system utilizes license plate data entered into DOJ databases for stolen vehicles, as well as wanted vehicles, wanted persons, and missing persons. Cameras are either solar or AC powered and utilize an embedded cellular LTE connection and passive infrared motion and detective night vision technology to take still images, not videos, of passing vehicles. Flock cameras can capture up to 45,000 plates a day and vehicles moving up to 100 miles per hour. Flock cameras can identify vehicle features to include make, model, color, and distinctive decals. Flock cameras detect unbiased, objective data and stores that data in a secure AWS government cloud server, which is deleted after 30 days. The data is CGIS compliant and is fully encrypted. The Flock system searches the DOJ database and matches captured plates, ultimately providing what we call a Flock hit. Once a Flock hit is generated, our dispatch center is alerted and calls for service are generated within seconds of the notification. To give you some statistics, we, we had the cameras finally installed in 2021, towards the end of August, so we basically started in September. So through the four months of September, we had a total of 355 Flock hits. So every time a vehicle entered into our city and the plate read, you know, the reader read the plate, we had 355 hits in those first four months. We had 67 reports that we took that were associated to Flock hits, and we have 49 arrest incidents that were associated with Flock hits in that first year. Now, that data, we didn't dig into that data that first year, but the 49 arrest incidents could be way more arrests, we just didn't add up every person in the car. The first year, 2022, was our first complete year of data, so I'll give you some more detailed numbers for 2022. We had 493 Flock hits. We had 97 reports associated with Flock hits. We had a total of 62 arrest incidents leading to 131 arrests. So there's usually multiple people in these vehicles. The Flock hit allowed us to recover 80 vehicles in 2022, and we were able to recover seven firearms associated with Flock hits. In 2023, January through August, we've had 338 Flock hits, 59 reports associated with Flock hits, and 36 associated arrest incidents. Year-to-date, 1,186 Flock hits, 223 associated reports, and 147 incidents of arrest. Some notable investigations, we've used, the Flock system's been utilized to help our investigators with the shooting investigation here in West Covina. We had a retail theft crew that was wanted. The car was entered into the system. They were on their way to a West Covina location to target a business. We got a Flock hit, and our officers were able to intercept them and route. We averted the crime in West Covina, and we arrested the suspects. These are just, just a few that I pulled out. We also had a Flock alerted us to a vehicle that was associated with a murder in a nearby city. We were able to locate the vehicle and arrest a suspect. So very, very, very successful. Currently, the Flock ALPR system is being utilized by all surrounding West Covina PD agencies to include LASD, Walnut, San Dimas, and Industry Stations, Bolden Park, Covina, Azusa, Glendora, Laverne, Almani, and Arcadia. Additionally, the council just recently approved our purchase of Axon Bodywarn and in-car cameras. A feature that comes with Axon is the in-car cameras will also act as ALPR readers for Flock. So we will basically up our, you know, we have over 30, 35 patrol vehicles that'll have the Flock in-car camera systems that'll be reading plates as well, so it adds to our network. The Flock system has performed better than advertised for West Covina PD and has become an invaluable resource to help our community safe. The Flock system aids in helping our department accomplish our mission of providing the highest level of service and protection to our residents, aiding in the apprehension of dangerous suspects, recovery of stolen vehicles and firearms, and enhancing our investigative abilities, helping to solve crimes committed in our community and surrounding jurisdictions. Flock also helps the department continue to enhance public safety in West Covina as we progress into the future by utilizing technology that interconnects the law enforcement efforts throughout the San Gabriel Valley, Los Angeles County, and beyond. From the police department standpoint, the inclusion of the Flock system to our repertoire of tools and resources to be utilized, aimed at public safety, has far exceeded expectations, and we highly recommend the continued use and, if possible, expansion of the Flock system in West Covina. If you want to, a little background on the contract, or you guys, you're good with the background of the contract? Okay. So basically, the option is, is we're at the third year mark, we can approve the third year of the contract, we keep our current pricing, $75,000 per year for the 30 cameras. In 2024, pricing goes up to $3,000 a camera, which will, will be $90,000 annually. And over a five-year period, if we elect to renew now and keep the low pricing over the cost, over the length of the five years, we will be saving $60,000. So that's kind of what, what we're here to decide today if we want to move forward with the five or keep what we have.
Councilman Wu.
And I think the Flock camera is extremely invaluable for our safety. I think the record shown, okay, basically, this is something very good toward, to prevent crime, okay, prevention, okay, because before they commit crime, you already arrest them because you scan, okay, and our, okay, police get notified and we'll go to arrest or pull them over, okay, and check everything due to the stolen car or the car without license or this and that. I think this is something, okay, we need to have. I would support five-year contract, but my question will be, if we want to add more, can we get the same pricing? Because right now, it's certified camera, so if we want to add another 10, okay, and I want to ask my, our finance director, the outstanding finance director, to see we can create, we can get the money out, okay, and to, and plus, we, I think we have a lot of private business owner, like Holiday Inn and some shopping mall, they're already willing to put a Flock camera. I think we have some of them. So we want to encourage more big private business, okay, they're willing to put a Flock camera on their parking lot so they can protect them and protect the city. Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely. So if, if we include the additional cameras now and add it to the contract before we sign the five-year, we will get the lower pricing of 2,500 per camera. Anything we do after this contract signing would be at $3,000 a camera. So we, we do have some time to add. In talking with Stephanie and the finance, we are, we are going to be utilizing, we already had budgeted for the 2324 fiscal year, the Fund 153, which is a public safety augmentation funds. We were going to utilize those funds for the Flock cameras because it, it falls within the purview of those funds. So we do, we do have a funding source, and it, and it will allow us to continue the funding through the length of the five-year contract.
And question would be, have you, okay, have the location and how many camera we want to add on? Do you have any idea?
We do. When we set them up, 30.
Five.
Wait, no, just 30. We have 30.
So when you 35, 30?
We have 30.
Only 30, okay.
30, yeah. We, they have, they have different options, but we, they have mobile options we would like to consider, but there are places in the, in the community that I think we could benefit for more cameras, for sure. So we, we can work with city staff to talk about where those locations would be and then add it to our network. But absolutely, if we, if we added 10, it would be great. If we could add 20, would be even better.
The reason I'm asking because West Covina, 17 square miles, almost, 60.5, so we have a lot of area, a lot of street and major artery for north, south, east, and west. So we maybe need to some intersection, put some camera, each of entry to the city or exit to the city, we have a camera, so we have a networking. So maybe you know the strategy where to locate, put it in, put it in, and how many we need. So we need to have our finance director maybe have a budget, okay, and if we can, when will be the deadline for us to, okay, and sign the contract for the same pricing?
Yeah, so it's kind of a, it's a, it's a little weird situation. We were supposed to re-up in August, but since Flock came to us, they're working with us. We technically have to December to decide what we want to add and how many, but I would like to get the contract moved along faster than that so we can get them paid because we do, we do owe them for the third year regardless, or it would be now the first year, and that should have came in August, so I'd like to do it sooner than later if possible.
And the last question, so I give all my colleague time, okay, would be other city, how many camera they have? Okay, for example, similar sized city or the, for example, Arcadia is about 60, 70,000 population, okay, and so how many camera they have? So we want, and I don't know, Pasadena, do they have a Flock camera?
I'm not sure if Pasadena does. I think Tony and I were talking about Beverly Hills has 70 or something? Yeah, they have like five square miles, they have 70 cameras.
But they reach, okay, we, we cannot compete with.
You know, something that's, something that's good, something, what we've done with the agencies that surround us, we're all catching the cars going in the same direction. So we're, it's like a net, but 30 wasn't enough. We put them the best places we could, but if, if we could add 10, if we could, I could see us putting at certain parks in the city, having these resources at entrances and exits where we're having.
What will be your idea additional, how many camera we need? And we will talk about our finance directors, okay, how many we, we can afford it, because I don't want to strenuous the budget.
It would be something, we, we could sit down this week, and we can strategically plot it out to see where we could best utilize it, and then I could work with Stephanie to find out the budget. I'd hate to give a number and put us, you know, I want to work within the.
Why don't we find out how many we can afford and then?
Correct, correct, okay. I, I hear my time.
I definitely would like to add, and, and just so you know, Flock has the capabilities of stationary cameras as well, so we can, we can grow this network into a big, a big thing.
Great. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor. Councilman Contos? Acting Chief Cortina, to the, since businesses under what we passed recently have the opportunity to put in Flock cameras.
Councilman Contos?
Yes.
This is Captain Plinkett.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, that whole thing about blind people hearing, it's not true.
I was gonna say, I felt tall for a minute.
So I'm so sorry. That's why you were, you were talking about Tony earlier, I'm like, huh, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, no, no worries.
But with, with businesses, could, could you talk to them about possibly extending a benefit to our businesses in light of our eagerness to, to work with them and as exhibited by our extending eagerness to extend the contract to five years so that businesses who voluntarily choose to add Flock cameras to our network could actually assist us where it would help their businesses, but it would also not be an expense to us? But is there a way that they would be, they could be approached to ask about what incentive programs they can put in, let's say, allowing the discounts to apply to businesses who decide to join their, join the network by adding Flock cameras to those that we already have?
Discounts, that would be up to Flock. We can talk to them, but Flock does have a, a department of their business that will help us advertise and get the word out. So that's how Flock started, started in residential communities as a security feature, and then it moved to the police. So it's, it's designed for communities and businesses to put their cameras up to grow the city's network. So yes, it's exactly how the system's supposed to work, and yes, we can work with Flock to see if we can get that message out.
And if they, if they could leverage whatever existing marketing materials that would appeal to businesses, as well as to condominium associations and others, and do that with dispatch so that we can, we can optimize building the network even faster as we, as we support the ongoing use of these cameras.
Sure. Yep, that's something Flock will do for us.
Thanks, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Letty.
It's amazing to hear that this exceeded expectations, and I'm glad that you've mentioned all the prevention. I know a lot of times we just hear the crime, but nobody hears how many crimes it has prevented, so thank you for that. The cities that you were mentioning, do they have Flock camera or is?
Yeah, they have Flock cameras.
And how many cities was that?
What I mentioned was the sheriff's departments all the way around us, Bolden Park, Covina, Azusa, Glendora, Laverne, Almani, Arcadia. I mean, there's more that have it in the area, but those, it's kind of like a circle around us, so we all have them. The sheriff's department were another system at first, but they've. The sheriff's department were another system at first, but they've learned how good Flock is, and they wanted to tie into what everybody else was doing, so now the network's pretty big.
So the network, it's, everybody's all in the same network and they all have access, like they have access to our Flock and as well as for the other ones? Okay, I just wanted to know that, good to know.
We each get our own individual hits, but like for investigative purposes, we can go back and go through the entire system to see where a vehicle has gone. You know, if you want to see a crime spree, you can kind of follow it through the Flock hits and see where they went, where they stopped. It's a pretty good system.
How fast, like, once you get the hit, how fast do you react to it and, you know, if it goes to another city?
Generally, the calls between the alert to the time it gets to dispatch is about five to 10 seconds, and then whatever it physically takes to put out a call, so it could be seconds.
Oh.
It's pretty fast. So, you know, but think, in that time, a car just drove through an intersection and they're continuing, right? So it's mobile, so now our officers have to respond to it and find it.
Got it, thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Wu.
I'm going to move the motion to approve for, you want to say something, Finance Director?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's gonna tell us how many we can afford.
How much we got?
If I may, because it seems that council would like to direct staff to look into additional cameras, the recommendation actually included the total amount of the contract. I would recommend kind of revising that to recommend that it be 2,500 per camera, so that that would allow the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement that sticks with the 2,500 per camera, but allows the flexibility to add additional cameras in such final form approved by the city attorney.
So what do you suggest, we table this or we, or we do that?
I got it, okay.
Correct, but the recommendation is 375, so I'm saying to amend the recommendation instead of 370, and a total amount of 375, to be 2,500 per camera.
Got it, okay. So I'm going to move the motion to approve the $75,000 for the five-years contract, plus the additional, okay, $2,500 per camera, depend on how many camera we want to add on, and how much we can afford, how many camera we can afford it, and to the maximum of we can utilize for this network to protect.
Now, I will second.
If I can clarify, so I think that we're changing the recommendation so that it's an amount of 2,500 per camera.
Additional?
No, just 25 per camera, and then it'll be through the budget that we regulate how big the contract is.
Okay, so we don't have to restrict it to $75,000, we just go to $2,500 per camera, okay, and for five years contract, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion. And plus, we need to educate with all the business owner, so they can pay forward for their own business to connect into the Flock camera system.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Santos for item number five, consideration of Flock's safety, automated license plate reader, camera system lease with amendment, instead of approving the amount of 375,000, it's 25,000 per camera.
2,500.
Excuse me.
25, 25.
2,500. Councilman Santos.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai.
Nope.
Mayor Diaz.
Aye.
Item passes 4-0, Mayor.
Thank you, Kenny.
4-1, excuse me, 4-1.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to item number six, consideration of the commissioner's compensation and council's benefits. Who will be giving us the report?
I'll be just giving a brief report on it. So the item before you was, Mother May I, that outgoing Mayor Dario Castellanos had requested to put on the agenda, we're bringing it back before you guys this evening. So the council, for serving on the council, gets some benefits. Each city provides different benefits to the council members. West Covina provides currently a monthly salary of $765, an annual allowance of $1,000, which this allowance can go towards hosting community meetings, going to trainings, going to conferences, and so right now, currently, it's $1,000. And then life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment policy as well. And then the city council is afforded the opportunity to select, or elect if they want a retirement plan through the city. The city council has not increased their salary or compensation for over 30 years now, so as I mentioned, right now, it's 765 that you receive monthly. And so before you tonight are various options to increase not only your compensation, also looking at options to change the allowance for the council members and including benefits. So in the past, council members used to receive various benefits as similar to those that directors did. And so we have items from medical, dental, and vision insurance, term life policy, retirement, auto allowance, as well as management benefit. And so, and then there's a table that shows the different benefits, and those are compared to the department heads and what they receive today. Lastly, we've had some issues with our commissions and commissioners not getting quorum for our commissions, and that delays city business, because if there's no quorum, we can't hold a meeting, and then we can't bring those recommendations before the city council. And so we're looking also as well as the stipends for the commissioners, and possibly if the direction of you would like to increase them or keep them the same or change the way they receive the stipends. So it's up really for council discussion, and if you have any specific questions, we can, staff is here to answer.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I was elected 2015, okay, and when I report to the HR, and they went through with me what I have, as I remember, okay, I have a stipend, I have a medical, I have a dental, I have a car allowance, and I forgot what. But I, again, I give up, okay, beside the stipend, I give up medical and dental and car allowance, et cetera, et cetera, because I can afford it to not need it. So meaning, I voluntarily, okay, surrender. But my point is, now you only restricted the candidate, only the people has money or people retire, or willing to serve, because, okay, they have time and they have money. So I think that possible, we need to see the future, because we are not going to see this forever. So we're going to see the future candidate, can we open it up, okay, for people at least to have a medical, okay, or some stipend to kind of pay for their expenditure, take a day off, and they may be lose their pay on their business, okay, to place their work. So I think we need to look into how to treat people, or future candidate, with fairness, so more people willing to serve. Right now, you can see, sit over here with a lot of abuse, and you don't get nothing, you don't get medical, you don't get, and another thing is, in the 2018, okay, I was here, okay, due to the previous financial issue we have, so we cut 10% for everybody, including the police department, this and that, even I feel like it's a may-may crisis, but again, due to that time, the previous city manager talked about, we have an issue because he want to raise the sales tax. And then they cut, okay, a lot of things, including, okay, symbolic, the city council, okay, willing to, the cut from $5,000 allowance become $1,000. And I think that is a mistake, because right now, you can see other city mayors or city council, they traveling to DC or Sacramento to lobby for the city. I didn't see any of my colleague, okay, go any places at all, for $1,000, they have to take the day off, the day, and sacrifice, okay, again, again, and I don't think that is healthy for our city future, for the candidate. I see Diamond Bar, I see Warner, I see all these city, okay, elected, they went to DC. $1,000, you cannot pay for your ticket. So I think we should bring back what we have before, okay, with the insurance, with allowance, but the people don't need it, they can give up, okay, they can say, okay, I surrender, but not mandatory for everybody, okay, don't have that kind of thing. So you, again, you restricted for the people, they have money, or they have, they retire, have nothing to do, okay, and we restricted the people can serve for our city. I think we should make sure everybody want to serve, they have, they don't get discouraged because, okay, they will, okay, and loss on their resource. And again, this is not going to happen right away, if we approve, this is going to be, okay, future election, okay, and then the future people get elected, they can have this. Again, I think even this is very tough, kind of sensitive, but we have to face for the future, we have to set up a basic. A question I have over here, because you see the question, I don't know who made this, the Burbank, okay, the Burbank population 105, 45, it's almost same thing like us, we are 108, 108,000, they are 105,000, but their annual salary is $50,840, and their stipend is $11,438. So I'm kind of confused, okay, is, are they making all these two combined? Because if you go down to West Covina, it's $760 a month, and the stipend is zero. So basically, it's $9,000 for everything. So the Burbank is combined, and you go to the Ontario, Pasadena, 21,000, okay, and then 25,000 Ontario plus 8,899, are they combined together or, okay, because it sound like this a lot for the electors supposedly, okay, okay, but just kind of confused, so, but just Burbank is just wholly micro, okay, it's like a full-time job. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so these numbers would be all combined to reach their total of what these cities are getting. Again, this is just what's reported to the state comptroller's office each year, and so there is a lag there, but those, the other pay is like their car allowance, or if they get a phone allowance.
So basically, they're making like almost 60, 70,000 a year, I'm going to move to Burbank. Okay, no, no, I love West Covina, okay, but again, just based on Burbank, okay, and you go to Pasadena, okay, and Ontario, 25,000 plus 8,899, they're making like 30, 40,000. Okay, but I don't think, okay, West Covina, we don't need to go that, that thing, but the allowance, okay, that would be absolutely need to be adjusted back to $5,000 during my time, because that is going to, if you don't want to reimburse, you don't have to claim, but for people, they need it, they need to reimburse, because not everybody can afford it for all this expenditure to serve for our city. Anyway, this is my suggestion, is at least go back to 2018, but regarding, never adjust for the monthly stipend, then we can discuss what would be fair for the city council, okay, to see some adjustment, because they have an adjustment for, since 19, what, 19?
19.
1990, so it's already 30-some years, never been adjusted, so for the, again, the tiny little money is not what people is going to run for the city council, but I think we need to at least take care of some of the people for their basic needs, so they don't serve at the same time, and have to take a loss of the, especially young people like you guy, okay, and they're really tough on you guy, I understand, okay. So this is the, second thing, really quick, for the commissioner, I think we should pay them since, okay, and for example, planning commissioner should be $75, my suggestion would be, if they show up, attend the meeting, okay, and then they should, okay, community service, $50 per meeting, okay, any of commissioner, we should pay them, show up $50, okay, per meeting, but if they don't show up for three times, then they need to be subject to be replaced. So in that way, we will have a quorum, because currently, I think we have a lot of problem to get people to willing to come, show up for the meeting, okay, and that's the issue, okay, so how can we encourage people to sacrifice their time, family time, and come to serve the city? Okay, hopefully, we pay them a little bit, their car, okay, for the gas, for the time, for $50, they're willing to show up, so we can have a quorum to move on the city team, but this is my suggestion, okay, thank you.
So are you saying you want to change, or you want to leave the planning commissioners as is, 75, and the senior services commissioner as 50, because that's the existing?
My understanding, in back in 2018, we cut then to $25, so I don't know why it's 50, we approve $25, we cut it. No, no, don't shake you, I will approve $25. So, but now, I think we should bring back to $50, okay, and back to the, prior to our financial stress, and then pay them when they show up to a meeting, if they don't show up to a meeting, they don't get paid, okay, and.
Yeah, that's the way it is right now.
Yeah, no, I think they.
Get paid even if they don't show up?
No, so it's based on attendance, and the current rate that we have is $75 for the planning commissioners and 50 for community and senior services commissioner and HR commissioners.
They all get paid $50, right?
The two commissions, the planning commission, they get $75, and they usually have two meetings a month where the other commissions don't meet as regularly.
How about audit commissioner?
The audit commissioners don't get a stipend.
Should we pay them?
It's up to the council.
Is there a commissioner, right?
It's a committee, it's not a commission.
Huh?
It's a committee, not a commission.
They should be paid.
They spend time, all the, they spend time to the thing, I think we should pay them $50 if they show up. It's not a lot of money. So I will suggest, okay, to pay the commissioner, okay, and all the committee, all the commissioner $50 too, is my suggestion. Anyway, okay.
Councilwoman Letty Lopez Viado.
In regards to the increase, I know I look at all the cities right now, and we're like the extreme lowest, pretty much, when you combine everything. Even the school board has it made overall, I know that they were able to attend, and ironically, the community thinks, oh, council, big bucks, over 100,000, six-digit, and when they hear, oh, no, it's only 765 a month, and when you calculate all the hours and time, it's like less than minimum wage, and we get the grunt and the beating and all that stuff. But, you know, the stipend of $1,000, some people don't even know, when I had to order business cards and just the city shirt or any of these things, they were taking out of the stipend.
Right.
So really, your stipend comes out to nothing, and when we have to attend these events or anything where you have to pay, a lot of the times, it's coming out of our own pockets, so we're actually going in the red, you know, personally, which is not fair. And you are correct, it's not, for those potential city councils, you know, when I ran, I always said it's always, the people who are in council usually has time or money, but, you know, the residents who would like, people who understand them, they really don't have the time or money, especially when they're, you know, working and so forth, so it does hinder more people from coming through, and those who don't have good jobs, they don't get their vacation or sick, so if they leave, they're not getting paid, and then, you know, medical and all that, it adds up, so I can see why a lot of people would say, forget it, the council's not even worth it. But I do agree, and I mean, I'd like to move it forward to the increase.
Mayor? Okay, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just to speak on who we can open this dais to, again, if you're talking about, you know, renters, right? You know, I don't know when the last time the renter community has been represented up on this dais, you know, and again, when you do have the compensation at such a level, and when we're talking about that stipend to go and lobby or go to meetings, you know, we're part of the League of California Cities, just to go to the monthly meeting, that takes, you know, a tenth of your $1,000 away. And again, it is a lot of out-of-pocket expenses to go to these conferences, the conferences that are needed, right? So when we're talking about, you know, attracting businesses, attracting hotels, attracting money from Congress, you know, they don't want to talk to staff, they want to talk to the elected officials, and, you know, we have not been able to have a presence because some of these, you know, restrictions that we've. restrictions that we've placed on people who serve. And again, I think, you know, when Councilman Wu talks about, there was a time when the city was in real financial hardship, right, you understand that and you make those cuts. But then you also then have to go and readjust and look at what is the current situation and what are the needs for the future of the city. And again, we're talking about, you know, we want to be able to get money from our congressperson, right? We want to be able to go up to Sacramento and lobby our assembly members. We want to be able to be a player in, you know, the San Gabriel Valley, you know, and we're looking at some of our partner cities and they're receiving millions of dollars in funds. And then you look at their stipends, you know, like the city of Baldwin Park, you know, over $20,000 in the ability to travel, go to conferences and to be able to speak with those folks who control the purse strings, you know, that's a big advantage for them, you know, and when you talk to some of these folks and they say, well, we never see any of you, right? We don't, we don't see you in Sacramento, we don't see you in DC, you know, West Covina is not trying to get any of these funds. And the reality is we place some restrictions on ourselves. And so, you know, this is something that I think as we move forward and as we continue to grow, to be competitive as a city, these are things that need to be changed. And as well as opening up these seats to everyone in the community where they don't have to make the decision, right, if I'm on the council, how can I continue with my job? You know, obviously, you know, all of us, and I would say all of us, you know, have made sacrifices too. But, you know, we were in positions to be able to do this, but there are a lot of people who would be fantastic in these seats who are eliminated because it just financially, they would not be able to make it work, they wouldn't be able to keep their jobs. And we're losing out as a city by not allowing all 100,000-plus, you know, folks for potentially, you know, being able to run. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. So how do we handle this? I mean, are we going to go through each of these items, like for example, the city council compensation?
Madam Mayor, please understand this is going to have to come back. We have to do, if you increase it, we'll bring an ordinance back.
Okay.
And we'll bring a resolution back for the allowances and the policy. What we need to know is direction and however, how you want to raise it, do you want to add all the benefits? Do you want to add allowance and the reimbursement policy? You want to go from 1,000 to 5,000 per council member? We just need that direction and we'll bring it back, but separate motions, just make it clear.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I think we don't need to go to item minds. I think we should let the city to look into, okay, and how to, okay, increase what the coordinates allowed and look into what's the impact. The finance director bring back, okay, the impact would be how much can we afford it? Okay, and I understand, okay, and for example, allowing $5,000 doesn't mean you will use it. During my time, when I have 5,000, I barely used them, okay. I went to Japan and see the city, I didn't reimburse, okay. But again, not everybody can afford that kind of, decide to not going to reimburse. And I think it's not fair for a lot of people, if they want to travel, they cannot because, okay, they need to, okay, pay for all those expenditure. And we really need, okay, all representative have a chance to represent us, to go to all the places, okay. And again, it's not here to represent me, okay, but this is represent the future council, okay. Even this is a very sticky, okay, topic, but need to be done for the future sake, okay? Because again, we're not here sitting here forever, we need to see how we can open it up, more people willing to run, doesn't have to worry about their financial burden, okay? So because even you go to the maximum $20,000, you divide it, it's not even minimum wage, okay, for the time we spend. So we really want to encourage people, okay, but everybody have a chance to run, okay, and electric coming up. So run, okay, if you, okay, get elected, then you can have a freedom to represent the city, it's not going to burden you. So my suggestion would be go to them, overhear the compensation to the max, okay, and then to see what's the impact, okay, and can we afford it, okay? And bring back to city council to final decision, to see what we're going to eliminate here, there, this and that.
Councilman Contos, did you want to say something?
Well, I really appreciate the sentiments that were expressed. And just to lay out for the public, these conferences with the few we've done or the networking, these aren't these lavish things where we all just relax. This is a, these are things, I mean, it's just not, I mean, you know, people have this stereotype of people going off and just living it up on the taxpayer dime, that is not what's happening. We are, whenever we've gone to things, we're up late, literally networking, exchanging information, getting information from other cities, asking what they're doing, exchanging facts about best practices, sharing what we're doing. It really, the power of networking really has, has an ability for us to actually potentially raise more revenue for us as we build these relationships. So this is not just a drain or, and people shouldn't look at it that way. This is actually investing in our ability to bring back for West Covina. And that's, I just already, even from my limited time here, I've already seen the power of this networking and, but there are opportunities that I've already foregone because I just, it wasn't in the council allowance, I just couldn't go. And so we lost on a lot of relationship-building opportunities and so I think it's really important. And so with that, Madam Mayor, if there are specific motions to move forward with this, I'm supportive, fully supportive of the, of increases in all of the categories.
If I can say something before we get to finance director? So we do have the estimated fiscal impacts on the last page for each item. So if we increase the council compensation to the average, that's going to cost 13,200 a year, that'll be an estimated impact to the general fund of 21,000. If we go to the maximum compensation that's allowed, that's over a little 2,000, that'll be an 80,000 impact to the budget. But once again, these impacts won't take place until after the next council election, which is November 2024. If we're talking about the allowances, that's a $20,000 impact to the fiscal year and that, like City Attorney Tom mentioned, we would come back with a budget amendment for those changes. And then it depends on what benefits you want. If you do the maximum benefits of 2,651, that comes out to 159,000 for all five council members for those benefits.
Finance director want to say something?
Okay, so Madam Mayor, I would suggest three separate motions. I would take the city council first for your stipend to the max. And then if you want your benefits, and then the car allowance, I believe, is 300, that would be one motion. Then I would do your commissioners second on what you want to do. And then the last motion to make it clear is this reimbursement policy. We want to go back to the 5,000 and that would just be a budget agenda, but just give us that direction.
All of those, yes.
Okay, so let's do three separate motions and be clear.
Three separate motions?
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the compensation to go up to the maximum?
I move, okay, you move, go ahead. I second.
And that is compensation, that is your benefits, car allowance, 300, is that it? That's it, right? Okay. Or?
There were the benefits.
Yes.
Car allowance.
No.
It's fine.
So are we including? Okay, so the compensation, the council benefits and the car allowance?
That's a stipend, that's your benefits and the car allowance.
Okay.
As presented in the staff report.
Okay. So I have a motion and I have a second.
Okay, only with a motion I second.
Okay. I.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
First motion passes 5-0.
And?
Allowance.
The allowance, that, can we do the maximum on that as well?
Yeah, it's a $5,000, right? Back to the 2018, I move the motion.
Second.
Okay, that's in the policy, that is a reimbursement going back to the 5,000, very good.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Protim Tabatabai to raise the allowance to the maximum. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, mayor.
Now, as far as the commissioners, do we do them one by one or?
You can make one motion for, but just be clear, planning commission.
Okay, so I think, right now, the planning commissioners receive $75 per meeting if they attend. And so I thought it would be appropriate if they got $25 more to make it 100. But that's something that we'll have to discuss here. And I would say $25 more for the planning commissioners and the $25 more for the community and senior services.
So move?
Second?
Oh, Madam Mayor, as a friendly amendment to include the audit committee as well, excluding ex-official members.
Okay, I don't have the audit committee here, can we include that? I don't think it's, oh, we have city commissioners.
Okay.
With that.
Yeah, I don't, that wasn't included in this analysis. If you want us to look at committees and bring that back.
Bring that back, please.
We'll do that, but, and, okay.
Please.
So I'd like to clarify the motion, if I may. What I heard was increase the planning commission by $25 totaling $100. Increase the senior and community services commission by $25, bringing that to 75. I didn't hear human resources, was that also in your motion, mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Increasing by $25 to $75. And look at the audit committee and bringing compensation back for the audit committee to mirror the other commissions? So that would be $75? That was a motion by Mayor Diaz, and I'm sorry, can I have the second again?
Excuse me, okay, the audit committee has a two city council, so those city council shouldn't get.
That's why I said excluding ex-official.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
Is that excluding?
Excluding elected officials.
Elected officials?
Nope.
Excluding elected officials, yes.
They don't vote.
Excluding ex-official members.
So that was a motion by Mayor Diaz, I'm sorry, can I have the second again?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Contos.
I move already.
Roll call, Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0 as well.
Okay. We have for today, are there any other mayis?
Regarding the letter, okay, regarding anti-Semitism and all form of hatred, do I need to make a mother mayi for resolution or, I think we should, okay, go with other city to, okay, and about to have a resolution regarding, okay, and anti-Semitism, including the all form of hatred and discrimination?
Yeah, it's been requested.
No, but we need to make mother mayis, right? Because we haven't done anything. So anyway, I want to make a mother mayi request to make this, to have our mayor, city council file verse to make this, okay.
I already signed, I already signed.
Signed already, so resolution?
That's been signed, but I guess there's more that needs to be added or?
If you'd like to do the resolution as behalf of the council, you have to come to the council, yeah.
Anyway, so I make a mother mayi motion to have a resolution for anti-Semitism and against all form of hatred and discrimination.
Absolutely, second.
Nobody against it?
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Contos to sign the resolution denouncing anti-Semitism and hate, and I hear no objection, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, we should do it.
Is that no more mother mayi?
No, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I think, okay, really quick, okay, I think this weekend, we have a touch of truck, right, over here. So I want to make sure people don't forget, 11 to 1, we have a touch of truck, have a lot of truck for you to touch. Okay, and the second thing, okay, and this coming next Thursday, okay, and the next Thursday, we have, okay, State for City, and we have debut from our current mayor, okay, to have his swan dance, okay, to show how great our city is. So we cannot wait, and I know our city is going to cook the dinner for us, so, okay, and so somebody asking about what I feel for is pay for the dinner, okay, it's for that. And then following the Saturday from 10 o'clock to 10 o'clock, we have a movie festival. We have 120 vendor booths.
That's a lot.
That is a lot. And we have a children's zoo, okay, zone, okay, kid's zone for all different kind of children thing. And we have skywalkers, okay, or, okay, Star Wars trooper, yeah, five, six of them with their costume and walk on the street to have picture with all the kids and all the people want to go back to their childhood, okay, with the Star Wars, all these hero. And another thing, we have all this dancer, okay, model and from, we have, okay, Foro Rico, okay, Mexican culture, we have Egyptian culture, the belly dancer, seven of them. And we have maybe 20 Filipino beauty pageant, they are going to have their pageant in November. So they will come and they have a booth too, they have two booths, okay. And then we have a lot, a lot of performance. So this should be a great event to put unity to our city, to everybody welcome to come. It's a free, okay, free event and free parking and I see you guys over there, thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, mayor. Just also, our West Covina firefighters will be at the Chili's this Sunday in the Eastland Center with the tip of firefighter, helping staff, but raising money for St. Jude. So I just wanted to make sure we mention that. So I'll be having dinner at Chili's this Sunday night, also watching Sunday Night Football. So look forward to joining the city of West Covina there, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, everyone have a nice evening and this meeting is adjourned.